We'll call the regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015 order. I ask everyone to please rise. We're gonna have meetings locations by Councilman Kara and I'll leave the pleasure to the leaders.
God of kindness bless us tonight. Make us a people of your faith. May we conduct our meeting in a way pleasing to you. Look kindly on this council, mayor, administrators, and citizens. Grant us courage and wisdom. Guide us in the ways of peace. Help us succeed in all our endeavors and plans. Amen.
I plead the plea of peace and love the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Kara.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Evans, Lasky, here. Mace.
Here.
Sartel, Gersky.
Here.
We'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 17th, 2015.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Communications.
First is from Robert Boyle, president of the East End Fire Community. They would be holding their annual block party on June 12th, 13th, and 14th. They're requesting permission to close Columbia Street from East Broad Street to East End Alley and to close a portion of East End Alley as needed in conjunction with the annual block party.
Make a motion to grant the request in the letter.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor want to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Next two letters are from Deborah Alt House of 406 Pitt Street. The first is expressing an interest in the Tamaco Board of Health. I'm a retired nurse and PA/EMT. I also was a firefighter and on Batista and Emergency Response Team with Town and Town Police Department. Please consider me for any opening.
The order of help we filled with world-class, so do we keep that on file?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the second from Deborah, she's applying for a position on the Tamaco Planning Commission. I wish to be considered for an opening.
I'll make a motion to grant Deborah's seat on the planning committee.
Second.
Motion by Tom, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Don't call me Deborah, but someone Deborah twice, one of us in trouble in the whole fifteen-nine years.
Now that you're involved with local government, you might be in trouble again.
Well, one of those times just wanted to hit the taker.
But thank you for stepping forward. Borough managers' report.
Oh, yes. Actually, I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. David brought something to my attention the other day. There is a one error in the minutes. I forgot to mention it to George today. The demolition...
Go ahead.
Oh, a warning of the demolition contract, SDL. It's a motion made, second by Conley. I believe...
This is on page two of the minutes?
Yeah, that is... Because I think Dave wasn't here at that point.
Oh, you're right.
So that might be what... Let me find it.
Do I make a motion?
Um...
It was Conley, Sartel.
It was Conley and Sartel.
Okay.
Sorry, got that.
Yeah.
Make a motion to three approve the minutes. Would that change?
Yes.
Motion by Dave and Mace.
I'm here.
There a second?
Awesome.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I put two items on the agenda for... The first was an amendment to our police pension ordinance. This is something that George and Mike and I have been working on for quite some time. And what this does is it addresses three items in the existing pension ordinance. First of all, it changes the member contribution rate from 5% to 8% in accordance with the police contract. And it does it retroactively to January 1st, 2013, which is when it actually took effect. We've been deducting that correct contribution since then. We just have to change the ordinance to make it reflect properly now. The second thing it does is eliminate the kill-in service benefit, which is in accordance with state law. That benefit is not provided by the Commonwealth and not by us. And the third thing it does is fix some of the language in the military service, the purchasing of military service time. And that's per recommendation by the Auditor General, the last R. And what we did there was just pull the language right out of Act 600 and plug it into our ordinance. So the pension consultant and Mike and I are a few that's ready to advertise, if you so choose.
Make a motion to advertise the ordinance amendment for the police pension.
Second.
Motion by Brian, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Just one comment. The police have been very good with the bump from 5% employee contribution to 8% employee contribution. We spent a lot of time, probably a lot of time, talking about our pension issues, particularly police pension. That contribution, although it seems small, over time will help our pension situation tremendously. So just thank the police officers, mayor, and see if we might. We still remember that they went from 5% employee contribution to 8%. It means a lot to the people at Tamaco. It does help. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
The second item I had was a housing resolution. And this goes hand in hand with our CEG program. We do this typically every year. We adopt a new fair housing resolution just before we submit our application for that year for the CEG program. We're doing it a little early this year. We were asked to do a new resolution because there's some additional language that they, that HUD would like to put in the resolution concerning the dissemination of our fair housing policy. So that's the reason for doing this now. So I asked if council would consider approving that ordinance, the resolution.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, roll call vote.
Kara.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Did Dave come in? Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Gersky?
Yes.
Thank you. And I had just one other thing I had to share with you. I received a proposal to purchase a demolition, an old demolition lot that we own. It's located at 234 Columbia Street. Now, we hadn't advertised for the sale of the lot in some time. I know we advertised at least once back in 2013, I believe. But I do have this, and I guess that would need to discuss with Mike and get his thoughts on how to proceed with this. When we did advertise it in 2013, I know there was no bidders at that time.
Any suggestions, Mike?
That was the one that we advertised a bunch of times? And what was wrong with it?
I thought we had advertised it more than once. It's a demolition site. I think it's 15 by 100. I thought we'd advertised it more than once, but I went back through my records. I could only see that we... I don't have one advertising in 2013, one of the other properties.
The same thing to do is just...
You gotta advertise it. You gotta have the tool, or else it affects the title.
Oh, okay.
Then even if he checks back, they're gonna say he didn't advertise it twice.
I'll just see if I have any other ads that sold that I can promote.
Maybe you could do it two years ago.
Yeah, just that one last time. The cheapest, the simplest way to do it.
Yeah, safest.
Yeah.
Motion to advertise and sell 234 Columbia Street.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I'll shorten the bid. Normally, do it with one way down, do the short one. They're probably not gonna get anything live, and we couldn't afford you to run the sale after.
Okay.
Or maybe they'll put a bid in. I just do like we do for quick. Make sure.
That's all I have this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Chief, two small items. Council approved two officers to go to school last month. They went in District Attorney's Office, compensated to the full amount, $622. And I'd like to send two officers to the class in addicts in township, April 20th and 21st, managing a property in Evans Room for small, mid-size apartments. As you know, Evans is an important aspect of the police department. It can't hurt to go get some training on it. And that would be $590 for a fall over for the two days.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
How about this? Regional DUI enforcement project, is that?
Excellent.
Is that good?
Can we send a thank you letter to the District Attorney's Office, too? I don't know why they pay for that finance.
They compensate the entire amount of spend.
That's great. That's good. I don't know if that's ever... Has that ever happened before?
No, it's just the District Attorney supporting us with our narcotics work.
Committee reports. Public safety committee.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing minimal qualifications for the assistant fire chiefs that's attached and talking about it for long.
Second.
Motion by Brian, a second by Tom.
Dave.
Dave, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Gersky?
Yes.
Continuing, I'd also like to make a motion to approve an agreement with the North Central Highway Safety Network for the UI enforcement project.
Second.
Motion by Brian, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I see something to do with... Somebody approached me the other day about line painting on the streets that specifically like Center and Cruse, Rodney Greenwood, Center and Railroad, Center and Cedar, any place where there's... You could have an option to be in one lane or another lane to make a turn or something. We don't have any... The lines are like white algae.
Oh, yeah.
And he says that, you know, he's almost... But yeah, I'm just wondering when the borough is for, is the borough gonna be painting lines soon, or does the state paint them? Does the state paint them until Monday or Friday?
They paint the center lines on the state roads, but the turning lanes, we do those.
So where's the...
Typically, we'll sweep the streets first, you know, get all the debris up, and then we like to paint the lines after that.
So the street sweeper?
Our street sweeper is broken.
What's broken?
Oh, the conveyor underneath.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's messed up. It's messed up. Not sure how long they'll pay to fix. We're actually looking at making a rental. Now, we have another sweeper, but it doesn't do here for the draw. The vacuum sweeper just can't handle it. It's heavy stuff.
So it's gonna take about one week to sweep all the streets? Or a couple weeks?
Well, it depends on how much is down. But the first thing we do is we just go out randomly and pick up heavy stuff wherever we can.
I saw you did that already.
And then, oh, we managed to do that for about a week, but then it broke, which happens from time to time. Things don't break when you're not using them, you know? So, yeah, we're looking at... We're ordering the first. We don't know how long they'll pay until the sweeper.
So you're gonna make a rental?
If it looks like it's gonna take a while, but we're looking to rent a couple of week sweeper.
So it'll be a month before the sweeper gets his job done, and then another month before the lines are painted?
Well, we'd like to take it out for two weeks, pick up stuff randomly, and then we start our normal schedule, Thursday, Friday. Well, the normal schedule of posting, sweeping streets, plus the Thursday, Friday, you know.
So what I'm trying to do is I'm just trying to figure, like, is it done in May or June?
A length.
Um...
You said that might be...
Stay in the area, the bottom of, stay by the month.
So by the end of May, anybody have it?
Sometime in May.
Okay, good. Thank you, Kevin.
Sure. Maybe we could prioritize the intersection of the areas where the line painting needs to get done.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's a little trouble area. I mean, the winter's brutal on the waterline, and the plows just whips it up. If there's a particular trouble spot, I mean, we could squeeze that in advance.
Won't the chief would know that?
Recreation and youth committee.
I have a number of motions. First one, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting a $60,000 grant from the Johnny Morgan Foundation Incorporated for pool operating expenses.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Comment continuing. Thanks to the Morgan Foundation for making that grant available. All the school district residency, a tremendous reduction in their access to the pool for the season as a result of that grant.
Anybody else? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Gersky?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve a lease agreement with Salute LLC for the pool concession stand for the 2015 season.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a comment as a continuation of the lease agreement with last year's leasing for the pool concession stand.
The handle of the...
It's Salute LLC.
Any other questions or comments?
Just so the minutes reflect if you're darkness, Mike, I need to interrupt, but the Salute LLC, I think we had personal guarantees on that as well. Just want to make sure that that's reflected in the minute, so it doesn't go badly as far as required.
Is that okay with you, won't you?
Yeah.
Any second?
That was gorgeous.
Electricity? Just all the terms and conditions of the lease. When you have an LLC, the LLC is the only one responsible. We had issues with people not cleaning up afterwards. And to go after, I don't want to just be going after an LLC. I want the personal guarantee of the individuals in the LLC.
Anybody else? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the season and daily pass fee schedules for the HD Bueller Memorial Pool for the 2015 season.
Same as last year?
They are... The ones that are listed in the attachment are the same as last year. The next one is to address another request.
I'll second that.
Oh, Carrie.
Carrie already seconded. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
The next motion, I'd like to discuss it. Just a little bit of background. I had a few residents over the course of the past year request something for, something if they had, like, out-of-town family coming into the area that were gonna spend like a week with them or something like that for vacation kind of thing. The committee discussed this at length last week, and we want to try a program this year, in essence, called a guest pass. And what the guest pass would be would be an opportunity for a season pass holder to make an application for people to get a pass to the pool for a maximum of two weeks at a rate of $20 a week per person. So that person would then, you know, make an application for an out-of-school district person. And, you know, they would have to give us information about who they are, the age, where they live, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a guest pass rate of $20 per week per person for a maximum of two weeks to the HD Bueller Memorial Pool for the 2015 season.
Motion by Dave and a second by Carrie. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Did we... We had that reported, guest pass?
Not to my knowledge.
No?
No. We... Well, we often have people saying that they have relatives staying with them for the summer, you know, which sometimes we know would be true. Sometimes we question that. When they're minors, it's difficult to prove where they live, you know?
So we just take their word for it?
No, we're gonna ask them to fill out an application, so they're gonna have to...
Verify.
Verify, you know, we're not gonna ask for, you know, verification that they live outside the district. I mean, if they're coming for that pass, if they're, you know, they're already saying that they live outside the district. But again, it would be for a maximum of two weeks. If they want somebody to just basically have a pass for the season, will we have a, an out-of-district rate for that and just pay that instead?
Do you think they'll ask to renew that guest pass?
Well, like I said, it's against the future for a maximum of two weeks, so...
You're not allowed to, you know?
So if there's anything for the summer...
If it's for the summer, then that's not for... Then they have to get a season pass.
They'd have to get a season pass.
Oh, okay.
At the out-of-town rate, I could rule...
Yes, the out-of-town. Yeah, the district season rate.
If they live somewhere else, they're...
It's always difficult to determine if they're being, you know, some people being truthful with you in office. I mean, how do you prove where a minor, that they don't hire Charlie? They don't carry ID. They, you know, they're totally built. You know, it's a challenge. It's a real challenge for Christine. So, and you were already talking about this, the pass would look very similar to what the residents get, looking on a different colored card stock, and would write under what they use the passes for before.
Why would you...
The timeframe of one is good for, not what days?
Um...
In other words, if I do, if I do for all intents and purposes, I do a card that has a punch, that if I have 12 punches on the card, every time you come in, your card's punched. When you get to 12 punches, is your card away, you're done?
So that's another option as well.
Then you're not limiting them to... I mean, I understand if someone's coming to stay for two weeks, but they may come for a couple days here, a couple days there. I mean, I just... That's why they can use it throughout that two weeks.
Okay. I can leave it to the office staff to see which way they want to go or have, but either one of those, I think, would be acceptable.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
The winter also had an effect on when the pool opens as a reflection of the school district having changed their schedule. So I'd like to make a motion to open the pool on June 3rd, which is a Wednesday, I believe, and close it on August 23rd, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
You're going back to school early this year?
They are. And it reflects that. They're going back to school two full weeks before Labor Day.
Kids are pretty happy.
They're... I don't mind or...
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And my last motion is a motion to hire Adrian Popolski as pool manager for the 2015 season at a pay rate of $10 per hour.
Motion by Dave, a second by Carrie. Anybody have any questions or comments?
This is just a continuation of Adrian's manager managing the pool. I think this is her third year, if I'm not mistaken, at least her third year. She's doing a great job.
Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
We'll have additional hires to make probably for our next meeting on the 21st. That's all I have.
Any other committee reports? Just under the downtown committee, I did hand out some information. Actually, Kevin did. I have copies on the Underwalk, the second annual Underwalk scheduled for May 2nd and 3rd, 2015. There's a copy of the flyer there for you. It was a very nice event last year. We'll do that again. So make sure that council has that information. Anybody else have any committee reports? Mayor's report.
I have nothing to report, other than I'll give a chain was plugged once again for the big benefit concert taking place at the Tamaco Area Community Arts Center. And if you can attend, or if you've made a donation, we certainly appreciate that. It goes to a great cause.
And we're gonna stick it to win.
We are. I was gonna say, we're very cheerful.
All right, thank you. Anybody from the floor wish to address council about any issues?
The area goes to KME for servicing this month's annual inspection. We were told it might need tires, so just be aware. That's all I have.
That is a lot of tires.
Yeah, it is.
How many tires?
10.
10 tires. And you'll buy two at a time?
Anything I'm being told, the rear tires, definitely.
Then there's eight of those.
You wasn't gonna be the front.
Thank you, Chief.
Not $80.
Anybody else? Solicitors' report. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Do we need an executive session tonight?
What an efficient borough.
Is there a second?
Take a second?
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Your website, your website had a million hits.
A million, just the website.
Million points.
Since, since, actually, no, eight months.
That is like...
Well, I started it. Trust me. Hey, in five years, 15.4.
Somebody's told me you should start, and everybody's...
No, no.
No.
It's not fun. I read advertisements. Nobody thinks it's seriously advertising. I read that, it's nice, nobody takes it seriously, that is. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Hey, your first question, ten dollars.
Thank you.